City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Here.
Alderman Win.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Over. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
President.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Nine, zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, February 14th, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements. Alderman, Your Honor, the Judge Jean Baptiste, we are all so proud of you. Congratulations.
Of course, Mayor, you caught me while I was taking a bite out of this Hershey that was in front of me. So, thank you very much. It has been a labor of love, and it's the familiar. So, as I transition to do something else, I will miss this. I've enjoyed every single moment. I've learned a lot from my colleagues. I've learned a lot from the constituents, and I hope to continue to be really as comfortable as I've been at the council, in the courtroom. This is a very great community. I've always felt very safe here, safe in the sense that you could be whoever you are, and you accept it, you appreciate it. So, next council meeting on the 28th, I will be saying farewell, but I will always remember this chapter in my life. It's been very significant. Thank you.
I would like to be sure that I'm clear with the community about the process to replace Alderman Jean Baptiste, the mayor of points, because it's, I don't know, more than 24 months, or there's some rule, but at any rate, it's my job to appoint Alderman Jean Baptiste's successor. I have begun to reach out to the Second Ward with phone calls and emails, asking what criteria they think I should use in choosing a successor, and asking for their advice. And I am looking to Alderman Jean Baptiste for his advice, because he knows the ward and its needs better than anyone else. I will, I am sure, hear more from people during the week, and a week from tomorrow, I will be holding a meeting at the high school for the Second Ward to come and tell me their views on who they want for an Alderman. But all the phone calls and emails have been very clear, so I don't think it's going to change. They somehow expect me to clone Alderman Jean Baptiste. But I will do my best, and that is the process that I will follow. And my last announcement is, the City of Evanston got this certificate from the Haitian Congress to fortify Haiti, thanking us in honor of your outstanding support and dedication to the Haiti earthquake relief effort. So, that was very nice, and please thank the Haitian Congress. And next, City Manager, you have announcements and presentations.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Several items. First, Police Chief Richard Eddington is here with a presentation regarding the Illinois Department of Transportation Saved by the Belt Awards.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Your Honor, Alderman and City Clerk. This will be the initial public presentation of Saved by the Belt by the Evanston Police Department. This is a positive endeavor that we're undertaking to encourage the use of seat belts. The Evanston Police Department has been a leader in traffic safety since the 1930s. We've continued that during this time with a 94 percent compliance rate with wearing of seat belts, and we want to highlight that effort this evening, and especially highlight the fact that the Evanston Police Department is one of the only police departments in the Chicago area that has a certified child seat installation technician in the traffic division. The Evanston Police Department has installed and safety checks a total of 335 child safety seats in 2010. This includes 10 seats that were received through a grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation for needy families. With that, I'd like to read the first story of award winner who couldn't be with us tonight. Ms. Polo Marcus was traveling southbound on Ridge Avenue when her 2010 Subaru was struck in the right side by a vehicle traveling eastbound on Church Street. After the collision, Mrs. Parker Mullet's vehicle rolled under the roof, the vehicle slid and struck two parked cars which were stopped at a red light facing northbound. She was not alone in the car. Her nine-month-old infant, Sophia, was with her, because Sophia and her mom were wearing their seat belts and safely secured in their child restraint seat. Neither received serious injury and were able to walk away from the crash unharmed. Our recipients with us tonight is Jonathan Clyberg. On December 23rd, 2010, Jonathan was driving westbound on Harrison Street in the 2500 block. He made a right turn onto Central Park. In his 2002 Mazda, the vehicle began to slide on the wet pavement, causing the vehicle to leave the roadway. The vehicle then struck a tree which was on the parkway, flipped over onto its roof because Jonathan was properly secured in his seat belt. He was not injured and walked away from the crash. I think this is especially significant as we try to convince Jonathan and members of his demographic group that they're not indestructible, and we hope that this is shared with his fellows at ETHS High School, the importance of using the seat belt and being able to walk away from a rather serious incident unscathed. Here to present the award is Sergeant Thomas Moore and Your Honor.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, next, we have Ivana Thomas, our Health Director, to give a plug to our next edition of Women Out Walking.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Mr. City Clerk, and Mr. City Manager. The mission of the Evanston Health Department is to protect, preserve, and promote wellness for people who live, work, and play in Evanston. In keeping with this mission, the Health Department will offer the Women Out Walking Program for the third consecutive year. This 12-week walking program has successfully provided thousands of people with the information and encouragement needed to live healthier lifestyles. This program will continue to incentivize walkers through weekly challenges, offer health information and fitness, class samplers, and monthly workshops. We'll also provide a supportive community environment through the establishment of teams and organized monthly group walks. New this year are a few program upgrades, which include improved equipment, better step-tracking methods, and optional programs designed to move people from the couch to a 5K walk or run. All participants are provided with pedometers and walking journals that will assist them in tracking their steps daily. Although we will be offering prizes for efforts and participant progress, the real prize is a healthier you. We again hope to offer this program to over 1,000 participants. WOW is free to Evanston residents. Non-Evanston residents are welcome to participate for a nominal $5 fee. This program is made possible through grants, sponsorship, and donations. If you or someone you know is interested in participating or receiving more information, please visit www.cityofevanston.org/wow, or call 847-866-2920. Pre-registration will begin this week and will end Friday, March 11th, 2011, at 5:00 p.m. The kickoff and orientation will take place Saturday, March 19th, at 8:00 a.m. at Evanston Township High School. Walk-in registration will be accepted, but equipment will be offered while supplies last on a first-come, first-served basis. Persons who are interested in volunteering are encouraged to register through the city's new volunteer website at www.volunteerevanston.org. Again, the kickoff and orientation is Saturday, March 19th at 8:00 a.m. at ETHS High School, and we look forward to you walking out with women. Thanks.
Next, we're very pleased to announce that this evening, we're launching our new Volunteer Evanston website, and we have a team of folks who have been working on this.
It's a team, because to get everybody volunteering, it's a collaborative effort.
And I was going to introduce you, but perhaps you'll just do that yourself.
I'll do it myself. I'm sorry. Wally, I'm so excited. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Green, City Manager, we are super excited. I'm Mary Beth Schroeder. I'm with the Evanston Community Foundation, and we're part of this great collaborative community effort that has launched officially today our new volunteer website that Ivana gave us a little pitch for already, www.volunteerevanston.org, which is going to serve to connect volunteers with the great opportunities there are to serve right here at Evanston. The website has been developed as a collaborative effort among the City of Evanston, Northwestern University, we have a representative here who's going to talk in a bit, Evanston Community Foundation, and both School District 65 and Evanston Township High School, School District 202. It will really serve as a community hub, this website, for the wide variety of opportunities and events for volunteers in Evanston. The website features ongoing and date-specific volunteer opportunities, organizational contact information for each opportunity, and tracking software that lets volunteers track their own work, as well as organizations that need to track volunteer hours. It gives interested volunteers the ability to search by organization, by interest, by the type of volunteer opportunity they want, and the type of volunteer they are, including opportunities that are specific for children and youth, for families who want to volunteer together, and even for those who need court-mandated service. Each month, Volunteer Evanston is going to spotlight both a volunteer and an organization of the month. It's a great way to show appreciation for those efforts, but also to continue to encourage that tremendous tradition of service we have here in our community. We are really encouraging all organizations in Evanston that have volunteer needs to register, and interested volunteers as well. I want to introduce one of my colleagues on this project, Mary Collins, who's the community service coordinator from the high school. Mary?
Good evening, everybody. Mary Collins, community service coordinator at Evanston High School. I was thrilled to be part of this group, working with Shanee Jackson, pulling off this website. This is a huge step for high school students. That's a very special demographic, although I think that young man was in college, but this is, for high school students, we all know that they use computers all the time. They're often on the internet. We really want to engage them even more in our community. There aren't a lot of high school students here tonight, but they can be surfing this particular website, volunteerevanston.org, to see how they can become engaged in the community, and we are thrilled. There are already so many opportunities that are posted. Many of them are for youth. This is something that the high school is very excited to use as a tool to keep our students involved and to help them participate in the community as much as they possibly can. So, we are thrilled. I would also like to introduce another partner in this whole endeavor. Natalie Ferlet is from Northwestern University. She is the Associate Director of Student Involvement there.
Thank you very much. As she said, I'm Natalie Ferlet. I'm the Associate Director for Student Involvement out of the Norris University Center. I apologize, I'm a little hoarse, so I won't say very much, other than to echo everything that Mary Beth and Mary said. We have worked really hard to put this together, and it has been a joy to work with Shanee, and she has done so much hard work. We're really so happy to work with her. This is going to be a great collaboration. Northwestern University students have a very rich culture of service, and we're really excited to give them this tool to help become more involved in the Evanston community. So, I will turn it over to Shanee to give us a quick overview.
Hi, I'm Shanee Jackson, the volunteer coordinator with the City of Evanston. We're just going to briefly use Mayor Tisdale as our example, as a volunteer, to register on the website. As you can see, there's various tabs at the top. There's a login tab where volunteers can register. Organizations can also register their organization. There's a search tab, and this is where you can do an advanced search for a specific volunteer opportunity according to your interest, or your age, or the different type of categories. There's a calendar. For special events, you might want to volunteer on a specific day. There's also a listing of organizations. All the organizations that are registered in this system, it gives a brief history, it gives their website information. There's also these medallions where it tells you what type of organization this organization is, what category. Then if we click on volunteer opportunities, there's a list of all the volunteer opportunities that is in the system, and it also gives these medallions as to, just to help volunteers out, to figure out what's involved, how do you categorize this volunteer opportunity? Is it right for me? So, right now, we're going to briefly register Mayor Tisdale as a volunteer. So, you can either go through login, or on the homepage where it says, "Not Registered", sign up now. You'll click there. Briefly assign yourself a username. We'll just use username, your name, email, a password. And then it asks you a couple of miscellaneous information. If it has an asterisk on there, that's required. And it asks you if you would like to receive information regarding volunteer opportunities in your community, which would be the Evanston community. You can click yes or no. It's not required. And then if you would like to answer further questions in the system, it'll create a profile for you as a volunteer, and it'll bring up specific volunteer opportunities according to your interest, or different things that you've checked out in the website. That's because I didn't put email address.
Shanee, perhaps in the interest of time, I think folks can see, it's a very user-friendly platform. This is from a company that provides volunteer websites for communities all over America, and I think one of the things we're most proud of, if you go back up to the screen, Shanee, the categories. I think so often, people don't know where to go, or they may not know the agency that they're interested, but they know the kind of work that they'd like to do, and I think those categories are great. So, we're going to be working with our partners who are represented here this evening, and other groups to get them involved, but we're just excited to be here tonight for the formal launch. So, Shanee, thank you for all your hard work with us, and Mary Beth, and the representatives from the Evanston Township High School at Northwestern, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sign up.
Our last presentation, we have made some significant changes in our senior services throughout the city over the last year. We wanted to take a few minutes this evening to provide an update to the council on those changes with our senior services. We have taken them, and they now all reside within our Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. Doug Gainer, the director, is here, and he'll start the presentation off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Clerk Green, City Manager Bobquitz. As the City Manager indicated, there were several presentations that we are going to provide throughout the year, that we have indicated earlier in the year, and this is about the third one that we're going to do. This one is on our senior program, and over the last, I would say, almost 14 years, the senior program has expanded to an unbelievable level. Christina Ferraro, who's our manager, came on about 10 years ago. She was with us while we built the new Levy Center. She was very instrumental in helping us develop not only the infrastructure of the facility, but also to match the type of programs and the vision that we had that would eventually be housed in the Levy Center. I'm going to ask Christina to make the presentation this evening. She is really the individual behind the expansion and the great programs we have there. I would like to recognize, though, and thank the Levy Family Foundation for all their support, and I'd like to introduce Joe Levy and his wife Carol, who are here this evening, and thank them for their continued support.
Hello. This presentation is designed to be educational and give people a better understanding of which senior services are provided in the community. There's a wide range of services that improve the lives of seniors in Evanston, support services such as matching volunteers with seniors who needed help with shoveling the snow over the past few weeks, to recreational activities such as fitness and the arts, to educational programs such as computer classes and brain fitness. The definition of a senior in Evanston is an individual who is 55 years old or better, and there are specific age-based services that are available for individuals through various government funding, such as the Taxi Cab Program, which is city-funded, so it's for those who are 60 and older, and the Handyman Program, which is federally funded, and that's for people who are 62 years and older, so they vary. This is a snapshot of the demographics of seniors in the community. The demographics indicate there's almost 17,000 individuals who are 55 years and older in Evanston, and with the baby boomer generation today, I'm sure these numbers will increase with the 2010 census results. These are the current demographics of long-term care facilities in Evanston. Plus, we included the data from Evanston Senior Housing Facilities. This indicates there's close to 3,000 seniors in those residents in Evanston. These are facilities that are licensed and regulated in Evanston, of which our ombudsman visits regularly. The senior services organizational structure is listed here. I just want to quickly introduce Leslie Wilson. Leslie, if you could stand up. Leslie is the program manager for people 55 and older at the Levy Center, and Karen Hawk, who is the Levy Center program manager for evening and weekend programs, which includes facility rentals, and Audrey Thompson, who's the regional long-term care ombudsman. We all work closely together and help put this presentation together, so thank you. The Human Services Committee has the Commission on Aging and the Recreation Board that report to them. The Commission on Aging has a long-term care standing committee, and the Recreation Board relies on the Advisory Board at the Levy Center for recommendations about programs at the senior center. And this here is a photo of the current Levy Center Advisory Board, and I do see several of the Advisory Board members and the Commission on Aging folks here. I just wanted to publicly thank you guys for what you do. The Levy Center is fortunate to have a separate nonprofit dedicated to raising funds to enhance Levy Center programs. It's a tremendous group who raised over $100,000 to assist with program equipment costs when we were building the new facility, and they continue to raise funds to subsidize costs such as the new treadmill and pottery wheel right now at the senior center, and I do see a few of them here as well. There are numerous partnerships that senior services have, and several are listed here: Age Options, AARP, the Adler School of Psychology, from which we currently have three interns. They're actually working with staff right now on needs assessment and program development, as well as fundraising plans. And we also have a great partnership with the Evanston Skokie Valley Senior Services. This is a really strong partnership, and they are actually a satellite of the Northshore Senior Center in Northfield, and they're actually responsible for the grandparents-raising-grandkids Support Group, and that's actually housed at the Levy Center. There's over 1,000 grandparents living in Evanston with one or more of the grandkids under the age of 18, and actually, half of those are solely responsible for their grandkids. And Evanston Skokie Valley provides childcare and transportation to the monthly support groups that are at the Levy Center. The senior services staff is assisted by over 100 volunteers who contribute over 100, I'm sorry, 10,000 hours of their time annually, which is a savings of over $85,000 a year, and that's ranging from professional to non-professional services. These volunteers provide some class instruction, as well as program assistance at special events. They also provide ombudsman services and volunteers to file income taxes for lower-income seniors. There's about 30 seniors right now who participate in weekly art classes led by a volunteer instructor. That's through the community service program at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, and the program allows members to take art classes at no cost, and that's year-round. The Commission on Aging has been in existence for over 35 years, advocating for Evanston seniors. They provide ombudsman services and long-term care facilities. They identify the needs of older residents and develop programs to meet those needs, such as the Handyman Program and the subsidized Taxi Cab Program. They actually meet monthly here at the Civic Center, but in order to create a greater awareness in the community, they're going to start rotating those meetings around the community, and actually, this next one, March 5th, is actually going to be held at Walkeur Apartments at 2300 Noyes. So, what exactly is an ombudsman? We hear that question a lot. It's an advocate who protects and promotes the rights and quality of life for people who live in long-term care facilities. I introduced Audrey a little earlier. She began in late September and has completed all her straight trainings and has hit the ground running. She's doing a terrific job. Audrey coordinates and collaborates with other agencies, including individual requests from community residents. She acts as a liaison for contacts with the Evanston Police Department and the Fire Department, Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the Housing Authority of Cook County. She also provides presentations for residents of the four senior subsidized housing facilities in Evanston on topics such as power of attorney, Medicare, and medicine management, and those kind of things. The long-term care ombudsman program receives 60 percent of its funding through grants, such as the senior health assistance, and the health promotion, disease prevention, and of course, the ombudsman grant. We've listed a few examples of the services in the community for seniors, such as the RTA registration site at the Levy Center, which registers seniors and people with disabilities for the free transit cards, and the mobile ID unit when the Secretary of State visits annually to save seniors a trip to the local DMV. Income tax preparation starts this week through April 15th. We will be doing that on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Levy Center, and on Wednesday mornings here at the Civic Center. We also provide assistance with circuit breakers, which is another frequently asked question, what exactly is a circuit breaker in Illinois Charis R X program? The Illinois Department on Aging Circuit Breaker Program provides grants to senior citizens and people with disabilities to help them reduce the impact of taxes and prescription medication on their lives. So, when the cost of property taxes and prescription medicines begin to overload our seniors and persons with disabilities, this program steps in just as a circuit breaker prevents overload in an electrical system. The Levy Center. We focus on individuals 55 and older during the weekdays, and in the evening and weekends, the Levy Center offers Taekwondo for five-year-olds, guitar lessons for grade schoolers, exercise classes for adults. We house the Evanston Children's Theater- We house the Evanston Children's Theater Program, and we have a significant amount of facility rentals as well. The building's open 82 hours a week and offers great spaces for the community, such as the garden and the computer lab. Programs and classes include discussion groups from book clubs, current events, and African-American genealogy, games such as the Wii, Bid Wist, and Mahjong, 35 exercise classes a week, everything from Tai Chi to belly dance, classes in the arts such as music, theater, ceramics, and jewelry making, and that's just to name a few there. The Fleetwood Jordan Community Center also houses the Foster Club, which is a group of seniors who meet there each Wednesday for programs and activities. The group enjoys weekly lunches, drama club, there's exercise sessions and day trips throughout the year, and the Foster Club's annual fashion show is held each October and is their only fundraiser, and all the proceeds from that fundraiser support their events and outings that are held throughout the year. The Senior Services Division offers several intergenerational collaborations. The Fleetwood Jordan Theater featured a multi-generational cast of residents, including former Lorraine Morton, who's actually pictured there, and that was in Mary Kwanzaa, which was a play directed by Tim Rose, the Fleetwood Jordan artistic director. A few examples of other intergenerational programs in the Senior Services Division is Y-Stop, which is the Youth and Senior Theater Ensemble Project. It's a program that seeks to bridge the gap between seniors and teens who are 14- to 19-year-olds by sharing life stories, creating an original one-act play based on these stories, and it's part of the Fleetwood Jordan Theater Outreach Program in collaboration with the Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan. Linking Generations is another program that's through Art Encounter, and that brings seniors and Evanston Township High School students together through collaborative art projects. The Build a Kid Program, that's organized activities for the seniors from the Levy Center, as well as the kids over at the Dawes School, right on the same grounds, and the North Cook Young Adult Academy students, that's the alternative Evanston High School. Transportation for seniors. The Levy Center bus was generously donated by the Levy Family Foundation in 2000, and the Free Shuttle takes members to and from the Levy Senior Center. It brings seniors to the main public library each week, and seniors in subsidized housing to local grocery stores weekly as well. The subsidized taxi program is for qualifying seniors and mobility-impaired residents. The Levy Center, again, is a designated RTA registration site to apply for transit cards. The Evanston Vehicle Sticker Discount Program provides a 50% discount on one vehicle sticker per household to Evanston residents who are over 65 years old, and this year stickers were sold from Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan, and we processed over just about $35,000 in stickers for the city this year. The Senior Nutrition in Evanston for seniors. Currently, lunches are being provided at both the Levy Center and the Fleetwood Jordan Center for under $5 a person per day, and the staff is working on a grant proposal for congregate meal nutrition sites to be housed at both the Levy Center and at Fleetwood Jordan. This will offset the cost of each meal, making meals more affordable for seniors in the The Levy Center earned national accreditation from the National Institute of Senior Centers, which is a constituent unit of the National Council on Aging in Washington, D.C. And I actually have the official plaque that we were awarded for the accreditation, which I'll pass it on to you. There's actually 11,000 senior centers in the nation, and of the 400 in the state of Illinois, the Levy Center was only the seventh to receive national accreditation, and we're actually celebrating on Friday at 1:00, February 18th at 1:00 at the Levy Center. Everyone's welcome to join us for it. National Senior Center accreditation is endorsed by the National Council on Aging, which has more than 50 years of nonprofit experience with senior advocacy. The Levy Senior Center earned national recognition for operating under the nine standards of excellence in senior center operations and developed a written strategic plan for future center operations. We've been asked several times about the benefits of the Levy Center being accredited. Accreditation will offer heightened awareness of the center's very high standards and potentially increase grant opportunities for us. And a program that we're really excited, we're going to be launching actually in two weeks, on March 1st. Currently, the city offers several benefit programs to seniors in which they need to apply for at different offices, at different times, and they're bringing us their income statements. So in order to be more efficient, we developed one card indicating which city of Evanston programs a cardholder is eligible for, based upon their age and income, for the Handyman Program, the Vehicle Sticker Discount, subsidized Taxi Cab Program, and the Recreation Division Program Fee Assistance. Plus, cardholders may receive additional discounts at Evanston businesses. Staff is working with downtown Evanston so that individuals 55 and older will be eligible to receive an additional discount at participating Evanston businesses, just based on their age alone. And staff plans on expanding to other business districts soon. So staff will meet with seniors one at a time and complete one form, receive one card, and be eligible for potentially additional discounts in the community, plus other benefits, depending on their age and their income. And the program will be rolled out quickly, so I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that. So our goals for this year, we've listed: to launch the Evanston Benefit Card, to provide a greater outreach to Hispanic seniors in the community, and to grow the congregate meal program at both the Levy Center and the Fleetwood Jordan Center. And I thank you for your time. Would welcome any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.[1009.13][1009.13](APPLAUSE).
And Madam Mayor, with a special thanks to the Parks and Rec staff for their outstanding job, that concludes our presentation.
Alderman Rainey.
Could we ask that members of the Levy Advisory Board and the Special Board for the Foundation stand so we can see who's here?
And the Commission on Aging.
As I know this.
And the Commission on Aging.
The Commission on Aging, too? Yeah. There they are.[1045.75][1045.75](APPLAUSE).
Well, Evanston seniors are a powerful group because they could hang late enough to hear all of this. Thank you all for staying. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. During the snow blizzard, I received numerous phone calls from residents who said they wanted to thank the city for moving the snow as well as they did, and I just thought I'd want to pass it on to the Director of Public Health and for all those who did the snow removal as well as they did during that blizzard. The other announcement I have is...
It probably works?
Yeah, probably works. Probably works. Did I say it wrong? Oh, sorry about that. The other announcement is that, just want to make an announcement to all the residents of Evanston and the surrounding municipalities, that there will be a relocation of the Vital Records Division of the Health Department in an effort to be more efficient and provide customer service in a central location on March 1, 2011. All death and birth records normally obtained from the Vital Records Division of the Health Department currently located on the ground floor will be moved to the City Clerk's Office on the first floor. All future business with the Vital Records Division of the Health Department will be accomplished in the City Clerk's Office, Room 1200. The phone numbers for Vital Records will remain the same. You can still call either 847-866-2972, or either 2357. And for all other questions concerning relocation of the Vital Records Division, please contact Ms. Evanda Thomas, Director of Evanston Health Department, 847-866-2969, or email ethomas@cityofevanston.org. That concludes my announcements for today, ma'am.
Thank you. Next is citizen comment. I will read your name and please come up and speak, or wait in line to be the next speaker. Gladys Brier, Mike Fasilko, Paige Finnegan, and Jeff Smith. Oh, and I always forget, would you please give your name and address? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gladys Brier, and I live at 550 Sheridan Square, and I'm here to talk about Evanston and the environment. Not many years ago, the city of Evanston entered a joint endeavor with its citizens and environmental groups, such as the Network for Evanston's Future, currently known as Citizens Green or Evanston. They were planning to, what they were working was to create a plan to lower Evanston's greenhouse gas emissions. Our plan then was to meet the Kyoto Accords, that were in effect then. This project's committees had leadership shared by the city and citizens. They worked in substantive areas to come up with the plan, which was presented to and accepted by this council. This widespread participation in creating the joint plan showed the outlook of our city to be leaders in the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. We did not wait for mandates from other authorities, either state or federal. In Evanston, we also took actions. The city built a LEED-certified firehouse. There were actions in other buildings that were LEED-certified, such as Rotary and other buildings where developments showed the intent of the city and its citizens to lower greenhouse gases. Higher costs were accepted in order to create, by the city and by others, a better future. The major emitters of greenhouse gases are buildings and transportation. We know that we must reduce these gases. This is where we can make a difference. We are making a long-term decision when we look at this new proposed ordinance. If we begin loosening environmental restrictions on developers of large buildings because they cost too much money, we are turning our back on what Evanston knows to be the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Fasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue. I was, I wanted to speak real briefly, and it's probably more of a question than a statement regarding item A6. The way it reads, you're going to be adding $5.4 million to the city budget for fiscal year 2011. I guess I'm concerned that it's probably a small number when you look at the total budget, but it's also $5.4 million of additional debt. So I guess I'd like to understand more about how that debt's being handled and what maybe the impact of this is on our total debt of the city, exclusive, of course, of the pension fund issue. So if somebody can address that when you get to this item, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Paige Finnegan, and I live at 525 Elmwood Avenue. I am here again on behalf of the Evanston Environment Board to speak on the proposed amendments to the green building ordinance. We are not in complete opposition to the amendments in the ordinance, but before I move ahead with my comments, I'd like to briefly define sustainability. Sustainability is a manner of thinking and behaving that takes into account the three Ps: people, planet, and profit. That's right, I, an environmentalist, said profit. Sustainability does not exist outside of economic development. I want that to be known to city leadership. We support economic development, green economic development. These two things are not mutually exclusive. Now, as I said before, we are not in complete opposition to the amendments in the ordinance. Yes, the green building ordinance should be codified. If you're serious about that and would like to consider alternative options, there are two green codes you could consider: the International Green Construction Code, created by the International Code Council, the group that creates our fire and energy codes, or ASHRAE 189. Two fully-vetted full-code options. If you choose to stay with this ordinance, then it should certainly be updated to reflect new LEED products and standards. Again, no issue with that. We support that. Now, before making changes like increasing the square footage requirement or reducing the certification level, I would encourage you to revisit the work of your appointed boards and committees that provided expert input into this ordinance, with justification for each recommendation and the ordinance that you passed. While we understand that this is a time-sensitive issue, I encourage you to invite your expert citizenry to provide qualified input on these proposed amendments. If this effort had been originally handled in an open and public manner, which it was not, this input could already have been provided. However, I remain confident that we can reach an amenable compromise in short order. Thank you.
Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, thank you for spending your Valentine's evening here as well. I've vetted my general thoughts on this by members of the Advocacy and Policy Committee of Citizens for Green or Evanston, but because this has come up so recently, the organization hasn't had time to take a formal vote on it. I want to make a few brief points. First, on history, Mr. Bobquitz and Mr. Griffin, you weren't here during some of the hours and hours and thousands of hours of painful discussion that went on in this community and in this room over ad hoc decision-making on projects. Alderman Wynn spoke to this in planning and development, and one of the reasons we've moved towards centralized planning, such as in the Central Street Plan or the Downtown Plan, and a move towards form-based zoning, is to get away from the idea that everything's in play if you just bring it to the city council, and if you can do as much of it behind closed doors as possible, and then roll it out towards the public, who then finds out about it late and feels that they're being steamrolled. We've been trying to move away from that, and predictability, which the green building ordinance provided, is part of that improvement. Second, economic feasibility is a false argument. It's ordinances like Evanston's that will bring the cost of green building down, and in so doing, create both jobs and more vibrant economy. Arguments against economic feasibility were being made by folks when they opposed raising the minimum wage, when they opposed getting rid of child labor. It might be economically a hardship not to have to, not to be able to produce your products in sweatshops, or it was an economic hardship when Detroit opposed the seat belts that we were giving awards for earlier tonight. So somebody has to lead, and that's L-E-A-D, not L-E-E-D, although they can coincide, and I think they do here. On the time sensitivity, if these discussions have been going on for six weeks or six months, there's no reason why somebody couldn't have come to the environmental community or the broader community and said, "What do you think of this in the abstract? This discussion already could have been started." This is an emergency of your own making, and if you're being rushed into a deal, my experience is that the salesman usually does not have your best interests at heart. If we've been given the rush on it, the best instinct and the first instinct is to say no. Fourth, I agree with Paige Finnegan, we need standards. You don't throw something out without something to replace it. You don't jump off of one point without somewhere to land to. There are alternative systems. If this amendment had come postured saying, "We want to have Green Globes," or Greenpoint, or Energy Star, or Bream, or any of the other systems that are out there, then we could consider it and discuss it intelligently. But without that, in the absence of that, we can't. Instead, we're being told it'll just be ad hoc decision-making, and that's, again, what we want to get away from. Finally, we have to recall the reasons why we're doing this. Green building is not a fad. Greenhouse emissions are something we're either committed to reducing because we believe in the science and because we want to be a leader in that, or we don't. We don't say we want to save the planet, but not if it costs money. Green buildings are being successfully built elsewhere, and it's the failure to confront greenhouse gas emissions, of which buildings are a larger contributor than cars, that we cannot afford. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, Junaid Rizki and Isaac Mohammed.
I'm going to make a few comments. Recently, I FOIA'd the organizational chart to the city of all city departments. As a taxpayer, I clearly don't see the need for some of the positions. I also think some of the departments need to be reorganized. Soon, the federal and state governments will start to cut funding sources to the city. As a taxpayer, I do not want to be left paying $80,000 to $100,000 for positions that were funded by the federal and state governments. Also, the federal and state governments have been partially paying for some of these positions. Just because there have been staff reductions here, I do not see the city as lean as some would see it. It's clear to me, some of these positions were created without the elimination of other positions. I think 3-1-1 is partially in that direction. I would like the council to ask staff to develop a list of all the positions funded from external funds, full and partial. I would like the directors to be held accountable. Once these funds disappear, staff would be given notice. If the directors cannot follow through, they should be held accountable. Some years back, a manager came up to this podium during budget hearings and was told he had to remove two positions in his department. He claimed they did other jobs. In better times, this type of, what I would call a misrepresentation, was rewarded. Today, I would see it as a falsification and grounds for his dismissal. The fact times are not returning. I know of just too many families in this community that are in financial distress and difficult issues. The city departments have long been, I feel, doing work, sometimes twice, and sometimes basically wrong, and those days have ended. I think the recent blizzard raised to me a very interesting question, if the overall management of snow removal throughout the winter has really been done as well as some think. Crisis has always exposed flaws in systems. Crises collapse Ponzi schemes. Weaker cities are starting to collapse financially. A few have stopped paying their pensions. And also, some cities have laid off large numbers of public safety employees. I think the crisis here may be yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda, first item is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January 24, then the approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of January 31. Under Administration and Public Works Committee, the committee requests your approval of the payroll through January 30 in the amount of $2,270,129.52. We ask that you also approve the City of Evanston bills through February 15 in the amount of $3,987,810.05, as well as the City of Evanston credit card bills through December 31, 2010, in the amount of $73,145.63. The committee requests your approval of a one-year contract extension for inspections and repairs for the heavy apparatus vehicles in the fire department. The award goes to, the extension goes to Werff's Industries in the amount of $163,000, and this is for the following year. Next is A3.2, approval of the purchase of insurance renewals for property excess liability and excess workers' compensation for fiscal year 2011 in the amount of $441,581. It is important to note that this is $69,929 less than budgeted for FY 2011. The committee asks your approval also of an agreement for wholesale water sales engineering services to Camp Dresser and McKee CDM in the amount not to exceed $56,094. Next, the committee asks your approval for a contract for the supply of aluminum sulfate, which is utilized in water treatment process, in the amount of $179,103.60 from, I'm going to just say the initials, USALCO, from Baltimore, Maryland. Next is approval of a contract award in the 1964 Filter Edition Rehabilitation Project. The council is being asked to award a contract in the amount, to Keno and Sons, in the amount Approval is also requested for the pre-qualification of contractors to do the cured-and-place pipe rehab of sewer mains. The following have been recommended for pre-qualification. One is American Pipelines, Inc., Insitiform Technologies, USA, Kenny Construction, Michael's Corporation, SAC Construction, LLC, Utility Service Authority, LLC, and Visu Sewer, Inc. These contractors are being pre-qualified to perform cured-and-place rehab in the city sewer system for a three-year period through 2013. Next, we ask your approval of a contract for comprehensive parking garage repair project to the consultants Wiss Janey, Elster Associates, in the amount of $202,350. A total of $2,100,000 is budgeted for repairs for the garages. Next, we ask your approval of Resolution 8R11, which authorizes the lease of 2022 Central Street in Evanston to Patio, Inc., which is known to us as Perennials. This is for a period of March 1, 2011 through the 28th of February, 2014. It's a three-year lease with rates of the following: $2,900 for this term, next year is $3,000, and the following year is $3,100. We request your approval for General Obligation Debt-Funded Capital Improvements Program, which the city manager is recommending at $1 million less than previous presented to us earlier in January. A6, I believe, should I take that off the agenda? The consent agenda, there was a request for clarification from one of our speakers. I'm going to remove Resolution 11R11, which has to do with increasing the city budget, and the chairman of the Administration and Public Works Committee will address that. Next is approval of a letter intent to the Temperature Equipment Corporation for the Main Library Cooling Chiller Replacement Project. This is necessary because the equipment has to be designed and built, and it's for a purchase price of $149,198. Next is A8, which is for introduction, and I'm wondering if this should maybe be introduced and then removed, suspend the rules, so that it can be passed tonight? It's been one of the longest existing issues on our agenda in one form or another. Ordinance 14011 increases the number of Class P liquor licenses to permit the issuance to few spirits for a distillery. This will increase the number of licenses from none to one. I'm going to move introduction on the consent agenda, and then there may be a suspension of the rules. Next, under Planning and Development, approval of a plat of re-subdivision-
P1 and P2 should be off the consent.
P1 and 2?
Yes.
I am removing P1 subdivision, re-subdivision of 2408 Arlington, and the dedication of public alleys ordinance off the consent agenda. They will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is a plat of subdivision, which is for Milburn Park. That's off the consent agenda at the request of our staff. Next is Ordinance 16011, extending the date by 90 days for a building permit to be obtained for 1,200 Davis by Royce Moore School. This is for introduction. The date that it's being extended to is June 1, 2011, from March 1, 2011. Next is Ordinance 17011. Did you request that be off the agenda?
Yes, off too, because there's an amendment.
That will be, this is the green building ordinance codification, be addressed by the committee chair. Next, Ordinance 7011, I understand is being taken off the agenda due to a problem with hours. Next is Human Services. That committee requests your approval of the Evanston Township bills for January 2011 in the amount of $76,308.98. That's for action. Under Other Committees, which is really the Rules Committee, Resolution 9R11, which amends paragraphs of the City Council Rule 2.1, which places Citizen Comment prior to Special Order of Business. Next, we have appointments by the mayor. The mayor is recommending appointments to the Arts Council of Aaron Adams and James Jansen, to the Commission on Aging, Ampie Bassa, and Pauline Dembricki, to the Mental Health Board, John Barfield, to the Public Art Committee, Judith Kohn, Utilities Commission, Nick Fracasso, and Marcella Landis. With that, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda is passed. Alderman Holmes, Administration and Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution 11-R11 authorizing an increase to the funding year 2011 City of Evanston's budget to a new total of $198,928,176, which is an increase of $5,346,418. Would move, I think the person who wanted this answered has left, but I think the city manager wants to address it anyway.
Certainly.
Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the lion's share of that $5,346,418 is the cause of the item prior to it, A5, which approved your general obligation debt for fiscal year 11. Mr. Lyons is here, and perhaps you could just talk. I think the question from Mr. Vasilko dealt with debt, how this $5 million fits into our overall general obligation debt portfolio, and any other comments you wish to make.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Honorable Mayor, members of council, Marty Lyons, Assistant City Manager. The change, with the addition of the $5 million in debt, we will be retiring more debt than we are issuing for this coming year. We'll retire about $6 million in principal, and we'll issue $5 million. Unfortunately, though, that will still result in a slight increase in our tax levy next year for total debt service. If we issued no debt for the next two to three years, and this was provided to the council in a previous communication, we would still have a slight increase in our levy over the next three to four years because of the structure of previously issued bonds. After that, our level debt schedule lets us start to have the tax levy move down in a controlled fashion. If we continue on with what we're proposing for our capital plan over the next several years with this level of a debt issuance, we should see our tax levy start to go down, but it will still take that four to five years before we'll see the decreases with our lower overall debt that's paid by property taxes.
Thank you. I hope that answers the question.
He's probably home watching now.
So we need, we need to vote on this, though. It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded?
It was. Do you have a second?
Seconds.
We do have a second, Alderman John Baptiste. All right, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 11R11, authorizing an increase to the fiscal year 2011 City of Evanston budget to a new total of $198,928,176. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Okay. Okay, Madam Mayor, on Ordinance 14011, increasing the number of Class P liquor licenses to permit issuance to few spirits, I'd like to suspend the rules, move to suspend the rules.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk?
Was it A8?
A8. Yes, A8.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the rules are suspended.
Then I'd like to move to approve the license for a few spirits.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the license for a few spirits. There's no lights, no discussion. City Clerk?
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes, Planning and Development. Alderman Sean Baptiste.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. For item P1, the committee had voted to forward this to council, and there's a request that it be held. So I'll read it and move it, and also there was some additional requests. There's a request that we approve the proposed plat of re-subdivision of the former site of Kendall College, the block bounded by Arlington Avenue, Colfax Street, Sherman Avenue, and Lincoln Street, and also referred to as 2408 Arlington Avenue, into 19 single-family lots, as shown in a particular plat that was included in our package. And so I move approval.
Second.
Okay, and there was a motion that we hold that in committee?
Yes.
I mean, at council.
Yes.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, fine. So it's held at council, right?
Right.
But there were some other requests. Clerk Green looks a little confused. Okay, all right. There was, did I move it too prematurely, or we needed to hold it and then move it next week, in two weeks from now? Is that what the concern is?
Mr. Green? I didn't have any.
Yes. Yes, attorney, we're fine? Attorney, city attorney said I'm fine, so we're going to proceed. The other matter that was raised is one of notice and process. It was, a citizen had commented that the PUD that initially authorized the use of this particular piece of property was now something else, and whether or not it should have gone to a process by which there was some discussion, public discussion and debate. We did ask the city attorney to come back and please give us some insight on that, and I know he did some preliminary investigation. We'll probably conclude the investigation two weeks from now. But city attorney, do you have something to say?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, grant for our corporation council. With respect to the issue that was posed during the committee discussion on this topic, I think that it's important to note that a- I think that it's important to note that a planned unit development, such as what was originally proposed, I believe in 2006, is completely different than what's before the council tonight for introduction, which is a subdivision of right relative to the R1 zoning in that area. It's my understanding, and I don't have the complete chronology, and I'd really like to have my staff report in two weeks, explain this further, but it's my understanding that there were hearings conducted on this matter at the Spark Committee level, I believe on January 19, 2011. I believe some of the comments that were elicited on the floor of council tonight were substantially similar to comments that were raised at that prior hearing. So at first blush, relative to the issue of notice and hearing and transparency, I'm not exactly clear on what the objection is, but I think the staff memo will delve into that and fully respond to all those concerns. Again, the real difference here is this is not a planned unit development, it's by a, this is now a subdivision by a developer who owns title to the property. And as I noted, a committee-level staff is trying to work with the developer and the developer's counsel to really get a process in place relative to some of the issues that Alderman Fisk and the committee have raised, which really is somewhat akin to a planned unit development. But again, Alderman John Baptiste, I will get a memo put together, get a staff report put together, that I trust will address all the issues that were raised tonight and hopefully address any other questions that may arise between now and then.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The citizen tonight also raised the question of, is the R1 zoning actually tied with the planned development? So I think that's something we need to clear up as well.
Okay. And I think an additional issue that has to be, that will be reported on is the fate of a particular tree or certain trees on the property. So I'm sure that all of that will be discussed. The next item is item P2, which is Ordinance 11-O-11. It has already been introduced, it was voted upon to be introduced, but we will, I think it's, well, it's going to be held at council anyway, but I move introduction because I held it back. So I move introduction of Ordinance 11-O-11, accepting the dedication of public alleys as a product of approval of a plat of subdivision for 2408 Arlington, the former site of Kendall College.
Second.
Okay? So it's introduced. But Madam Mayor, there's another matter, and that was Alderman Rainey asked staff to contemplate whether or not this alley ought not be sold to the developer so that it can get back on the tax roll because ordinarily if the, that's not what, that's not what it is. The developer owns it. Oh, they want to give it back to us. That's right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Whether or not we ought to buy or accept it as a gift, because if we do, it will get back on, it will not be on the tax roll. So staff is supposed to be thinking about that and to respond to us. Okay, fine.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just suggest that if we did not accept the dedication of the alley, that we request that the property owner put in some water detention, stormwater detention plan, because my understanding is that he would not have to do that, and that's really necessary.
Okay. So.
No, I thought that was a good idea, like we should talk about that.
Okay. Well, we've asked staff to think about it, and staff hopefully will respond to that. Okay? All right. The next item, I think it was taken off the agenda, consent agenda, that's item P3, which is a request, what?
We have to vote to introduce.
We did vote to introduce, didn't we?
Was it on the consent agenda to be introduced?
No, P3 is a different, she's saying the previous, P2.
So we.
I thought we voted to introduce P2, did we not?
No.
Okay, then I move that was seconded. Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce P2. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? P2 is introduced.
P3 is for action. This is a request that we approve, a subdivision of two lots of record, one zoning lot held in common ownership to comply with the zoning ordinance. Site plan and appearance review committee approved subdivision, noting that any egress to Lot 2 would need to come from Melbourne Park and not Sheridan Road. So I move approval.
Okay.
Okay? But there was.
You want to hold it?
The applicant has, the applicant's requested.
Applicant has, okay. All right. Then it'll be held in, then, you know, would be held in council, right?
Right.
All right.
Alderman, I.
Is it in committee or?
Our recommendation would be to hold it in committee, given that there was no discussion of the matter.
Okay. All right, fine. Okay, because the only discussion I remember is that there was a request that egress now be to Sheridan Road.
And Alderman members of the council, that's something that we still need to talk with with the applicant. There was apparently some level of miscommunication, so we will address that over the next two weeks, and if you could hold it in committee, we would.
Okay. Fine. Item P5 is for introduction, and there was also an amendment that came out of committee, and that amendment was to paragraph 4-25-3, under new construction and addition requirements, Alderman Rainey had moved that the new construction additions be expanded as, to 20,000 feet as opposed to 10,000 square feet. So then I will move, as amended at committee level, the, the Ordinance 707-O-11 granting a special use for a type 2 restaurant, I'm sorry, for type 2 restaurant. 17-O-11 codifying and amending Ordinance 14-O-09, green building ordinance. This amendment provides for an alternate compliance with the city's goal of leadership in energy and environmental design, LEED, Silver Certification on Building Construction falling under this regulation. Can we get a second?
It's been moved and seconded, Alderman Burris?
I'm going to sit for this one. As many of you know, I'm pretty not happy with how this has all transpired. I think the process to change the green building ordinance that the city manager chose to take has not been transparent and thus very disappointing. Actually, I think it's the first time I've been very disappointed in the staff administration here at the city in the time I've been on council. The revisions to the green building ordinance are being railroaded through without consulting the numerous citizen groups and businesses, or the experts in environmental issues that worked many years to develop the green building ordinance that the city council adopted less than a year ago. I find it ironic, actually, that the city has hired this new environmental coordinator, and one of her first actions is to lower the green building ordinance standards. Why did the city ask the environment board, Citizens for Greener Evanston, to work on the green building ordinance if the city manager would later just assign a staff member to write a new ordinance to suit what he wanted? How can commissions, boards, committees trust the city administration and city council that they value the volunteers' time? We clearly have not exhibited that. The green building ordinance has not been given a real chance, rather because one business complains about the ordinance and threatens not to locate in Evanston, we immediately change the ordinance. This seems short-sighted. Although both the city manager and Director of Community and Economic Development said the city has many applicants wanting to build in Evanston but are being deterred by the green building ordinance, well, I would like to know how many applicants have come to the city that have not located in Evanston because of the green building ordinance. Maybe I haven't read my packets, maybe I haven't read the information enough, I haven't seen that on the table here. Let's be honest, this change is for one location, one business. Would the city change its building code because it's too stringent, or the preservation ordinance because it's too expensive for a business or an institution? I equate this reduction into the green building standards to lowering admissions standards at a college in order to admit more students, but in the process make the quality of the education the school average or below average. You lose quality and become average. Does Evanston want to be average, or do we want to be, as we claim, a leader in environmental standards? Are we average? I would hope not. Finally, not having predictable standards furthers the notion of corrupt government and that there is preferential treatment for those developers or businesses with connections to the city, or they're capable of hiring expensive attorneys. We saw this in the tower development. This is exactly what would happen again. As always, I remain hopeful that the Evanston elected officials will hold steadfast and be a leader in sustainability and all that we do.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, in following the process now, after we didn't, the city manager indicated very clearly that this matter was going to be discussed with the various boards. We have a process in place, we do not debate issues that are for introduction, and the city manager is going to go back, discuss with the various boards that are affected by this, come back, we can all discuss this in the next two weeks, come back and see if we can't get a plan. You know, nobody's crooked here. As a matter of fact, the applicant, or the proposed applicant, has no attorney, just so you know. Not only is he rich and, you know, well-known, but there aren't any. So I think we should just move on, this is for introduction, let's not get too excited, there's a lot more work to be done on this, and I'll be glad to work with you. And, you know, people can disagree, people can disagree. We're not, we're not caving in, we're trying, we're trying to make it work, so let's just move on.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I want to support introduction so that we can reopen the discussion and include those groups who were part of our deliberations in the beginning, tap our local experts. I don't think that our green building ordinance committee has disbanded, I think they seem ready in the waiting to help us.
I believe there was a time limit on there.
All right, well, let's explore that. I have some questions I'd love answered tween now and when this comes back before the council, such as the status of the committee, how do we define financial hardship as granting exemptions within the proposed amendments, when is a project deemed unfeasible and not required to comply, whether the process for exempting a project from the green building ordinance requirements is indeed transparent so that this alternative compliance suggested by the proposed amendments is not really just staff discretion, because I think that gets us back into where we don't want to be. So, and I'd love also to see if there are any other examples of a green building for the kind of retail establishment that is wanting to come here but feels constrained by our ordinance. Are there other types of those retail establishments that have succeeded in complying with any kind of green building standards? Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, members of the council. I just wanted to make clear for all of you, members of the community, that this amendment was proffered by me and the staff working with me. This is not a product of our new Sustainable Programs Coordinator, Catherine Hurley. Catherine, who's in my office, reports to me, and she has been working with the community groups in my direction. So if there is ultimately concern among the council and the community about this, the concern should properly be directed toward me and not Ms. Hurley or any members of the staff.
Thank you. Alderman John Baptiste?
I just want to say that, you know, we shouldn't automatically use the words attorneys, corrupt, and crooked in the same statements when we trying to address certain issues. And I know that sometimes people tend to grab on to that half-statement, that sometime people say, you know, kill all the lawyers, but the preceding statement is, should tyranny prevail? Okay? If we want tyranny to prevail, then kill all the lawyers. So, you know, there's a complete statement, a complete thought. I think that the processes that we've been engaged in on the council to come to approve certain decisions have always been open and transparent. The city manager cannot advance anything unless he comes to us. He put forth, he puts forth a particular ordinance, we have to consider whether or not to advance it. We can oppose it, we could vote it down, and we can say, process-wise, you didn't do certain things you should do, so go ahead and speak to our boards and various other agencies that we have in place. So I don't think it's, we're that far afield, I think we have to understand that the process goes on. So it is true, we shouldn't just violate, you know, process and create distress on the part of the boards and commissions that we have set in place. But I think that sometimes the city manager has come forward and said, look, there are some urgent matters to be considered, I want to submit a proposal, and let us deliberate over the proposal and see whether or not we can move forward. And I think that the Paige Finnegan said tonight that she's not totally opposed, she wants to be able to sit down and see how we could come to consensus, and city manager, that's what you're going to do, right? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think in our efforts to be ahead and to be very progressive, that using our community experts and everyone else, that maybe we didn't look at everything. And this is so new that I don't think we know everything, or nor do our experts know everything. And so, I hate to say a mistake was made, but we just overlooked some stuff, and so now we have to come back and look at types of buildings that may not reach the level of silver lead. And this is what it's all about, and we have to figure out some ways. Folks, we have to wake up and know that we've got to have some economic development in this community, and we need to have economic development people come and be able to survive in the community. And there's going to have to be some give and take on both sides, and I think that we have to do that. And I think we all want to be green, but we always have to remember that it is expensive to be green, and so we have to understand that. And I, you know, maybe people have, other people may have the money, some people may not, and I think that that's something we'll have to deal with.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to even try to reiterate what Alderman Burris said, but I think it was right on. I think this was certainly a bit of an embarrassment for all of us, at least it was for me on council, to be sort of blindsided by this. I didn't see it coming until it was last week, and much too late to really put together any sort of understanding of it, and certainly at any sort of committee level. So I hope the process will go on very quickly with the committees, we have great people in place, and I'm confident that it will work out in the best of our all various interests.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I am as pro-economic development as anybody. I believe in it, I think it's a thing that we need to focus on, but we can't do it and take anything, and we'll have other below standards. We should be better than that. We shouldn't be average, and that's what we're doing. We're saying, we'll take any development, and if they complain, we will roll over and change our ordinance for them. I think that's a problem. And I do want to follow up on Mr. Bobekowitz's comment. I was not saying that Ms. Hurley acted alone, I was very clear that she was directed by you to do this, but as her first act, really, that was the issue. It's not, we have an environmental coordinator, and instead of making things better for environmental and sustainability, it was going the opposite way, was my point. So I, please know, I know exactly where this came from and exactly how it was all laid out. So it was not an attack on Ms. Hurley, it was saying that was, you charged her with doing. So once again, pro-economic development, but we have, we have to do it within the confines of being. of being a bit above the standard. And I hope that others will see it that way.
I deal with the lead building ordinance in my other life professionally and it is a new ordinance. The reason I support it is it's really the only game in town. But the lead building ordinance has, I believe, several flaws. And those of us who deal with it are hoping that it will be improved over time with experience. And I think that this is one of the flaws that it has, is showing up in this particular instance. I don't think that people who question lead are backing off of environmental stances. I think lead is imperfect as almost everything is, but certainly this kind of groundbreaking effort to come up with a lead ordinance was, I think, a terrific effort and very important to all of us. But it needs improvement and it will get improvement over time. And this may be one of those examples of improvement being needed. So I don't regard this as backing off of an environmental stance. I think that what we need to do is take a look and see if this is an instance where a lead does not perfectly fit the development that is proposed and was not designed for this kind of development. Lead is going to change over time and lead is going to improve over time. It has been moved and seconded. What was moved and seconded? That we introduced this?
Introduced.
All in...
As amended.
As amended. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded that we introduce the green building ordinance as amended. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes. Have it. The ordinance passes. Off back...
Introduced.
It's introduced. Thank you. It is after 10 o'clock. You can tell.
That concludes my report, ma'am.
No, you have.
Oh, that's right. Man. I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Fisk?
Okay, we move ordinance 07-11, granting a special use for a type 2 restaurant at 824 Clark Street in the D2 downtown retail core zoning district.
Move approval.
There is a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I ask for this to be removed from the agenda so we can make a correction. The business will operate until 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights, but to midnight from Sunday through Thursday. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm reading the minutes right here. It was unanimous on the committee.
Yeah. No, it's a correction to the agenda. Yeah, agenda.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded.
As corrected.
For action, as corrected. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero. The motion passes. Alderman Grover, you have no report? Do you have a... Who's... Oh, you're done. All right. Lionel, you're finished. Alderman Grover, no report. Moving right along here. All right. Call of the wards. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Well, with the way that I was stumbling on everything, I don't know whether I could give a report, but I've got to give a report. And as you guys know, I'm moving on. But it's been a great honor serving the constituents and thank you very much for the support that you've given me, voting me into office 10 years ago approximately. And at the time that I came into office, I remember sitting here at my first meeting and I was in tears because I had just lost my stepfather who raised me. And my stepfather, the reason why I was, you know, I was just emotional about it, we had, you know, he was a man who was a very simple man. He had, he was asthmatic all his life. And he had had an operation very early on that made his leg straight. He couldn't bend his left leg. And this was an individual who could have opted for disability, you know, found some excuses to do very little. But he worked three jobs. He worked at Rush North Shore. He cleaned floors at Kendall College. And he was a barber at home on weekends. He never made any excuses, never perceived himself as having limitations. And so now I would say the same thing about my mother, who haven't had an eighth grade education, but today would, you know, read all kinds of books, engage in all kinds of deep discussions. And I remember recently, she's, well, when she had gotten a copy of Barack's book, Audacity of Hope. And she said, well, this is us, audacity of hope to do, to go beyond our limitations. So it is with that kind of disposition and can-do attitude that I think that I came from. And I try to pass it on to my kids. And that's why that often my advocacy on this council is to say that our kids don't really have, let's not put limitations on them. They're not underprivileged. Because sometimes when you say underprivileged, you're really characterizing somebody's mental state. Disadvantaged, at risk. These things characterize as a prophecy almost. And a lot of our kids who are characterized as such are treated with low expectations. Poverty doesn't mean that you are less than the next individual. But if society treats you like that, you may behave in that way and you may really turn out to be a lesser individual in terms of your contribution to society. So I've been lucky to have had a great education and I've been lucky to have been appreciated by the constituents of this city. I've been lucky to have served with every single one of you and to always feel that our differences were resolvable. And even when Alderman Rainey would finish an argument and walk away, I always know that she still loved me. And so, you know, I think that this is our commitment, the selflessness. I mean, all we do is give. This is what we do. We are servants at the first level, first degree. Your next-door neighbor can knock on your door and say, look, my garbage was not picked up. We're not in Springfield. We're not in Washington. We're accessible all of the time. And so it has to be a labor of love. And so I shared those last 10 years with those of you who have been here this long and those of you who have been here for a shorter period of time and really loving every moment. We complained leaving out of here late at night and going to so many committee meetings. But we do it because we want to do it and because we love what we do. I want to say also thank you to the entire staff. Every single one, every single member of the staff have been totally committed. I mean, there's nothing that usually I ask. And, you know, I remember my grandmother used to make you feel like you're the favorite kid. There was always something, some stash that she pulls out and gives to you. And, you know, so sometimes, you know, I would brag, yeah, I was the favorite. But come to find out, that's the way that my grandmother treated everybody, all her grandchildren. So I think that the staff, you know, does deal with us like that. Every single one of us, they want to do the best that they can to try to make sure that we are satisfied. And even though Alderman Rainey says, I don't know about that. But the reality is, they've been committed and I've been very thankful for the support. And I think that the city's getting better. It's getting better because of our advocacy, because of the staff, the quality of the staff, the quality of the leadership from the city manager to make sure that he pushes the envelope every single day. So two weeks from now, I will be back and we will talk. And hopefully, the mayor will choose a replacement for me. And, you know, we'll be able to share this moment in this kind of formal setting, but I'll be around. So we'll be seeing each other in this place, in this city we love, and be able to continue to coexist and make this the most livable city that it can possibly be. So thank you very much for all the good times. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Alderman Jean Baptiste. We will all miss your eloquence so much. This is just a brief congratulations to Paul Letgo. Thank you for staying the course with us through all of this. We all may, you may need the drink first, but then we'll all come and share. And we'll talk more in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
And just a quick thank you to all the city staff who'd worked so hard throughout the snow emergency and also to my constituents for keeping me very well advised and informed throughout the process. And I do appreciate that because it did help make things go better than they otherwise would have gone. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
If I can get up. I want to say to Paul, I'm going to change the name of your business yet, Free Spirits. I like that. But congratulations. Alderman Jean Baptiste, I'll have to wait for two weeks because I'm not ready to cry, to say anything to you yet. I just want to again express sympathy to the outlaw Spencer Davis Taylor family and the loss of Maime Spencer, who was the first African-American, although she didn't look like it, African-American alderperson for the city of Evanston. And African-American female alderman for the city of Evanston. Also wanted to say that this Wednesday, the 16th, and also Saturday, the 19th, on NBC at 5:00, one of our local businesses, which I am so, I'm grinning at Nancy, one of our local businesses, which actually is in Alderman Wilson's ward, Ashley Lauren, owned by Georgia Parker, will be on Someone You Should Know. So please tune in. This young woman started her business in her basement and is now expanding. And our city staff has been absolutely fantastic in terms of working with her. So we're very proud of her and our staff for doing that. And so please be sure to tune in.
Alderman Holmes, can you tell us where it's located?
At, I want to say 1116 Davis, right across from the post office. Ashley Lauren. Wonderful products. You should go in there. They're for everyone. So please go in. And then just to invite you all to the fifth ward meeting this coming Thursday, the 17th. It's going to be an exciting meeting. We'll have, Mr. McGray will be there with 311, our chief of police, and also our fire department chief. So we'll have those three presentations and you're all welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to thank the Streets of Sanitation for the wonderful job they did. At least I was a witness to it in the sixth ward and throughout this, other parts of the city as well. But I got many, many compliments and hopefully I passed them all on because they were great compliments and very few negatives. And on that high, I decided to plan a ward meeting for March 2nd that we can kind of recap things. It'll be at the Presbyterian Homes, 3200 Grant Street, in the James Room, which is above the Kimball Fitness Center. That's on the north side of the campus and there's ample parking. So 7:00, March 2nd, at the Presbyterian Homes. And there'll be more information coming about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So begins our long farewell, Alderman Jean Baptiste. Like your grandmother, I have to say, you're my favorite too.
Thank you.
Same way. And I have to follow that up with a Valentine's Day gift to my husband. Happy Valentine's Day, wherever you are. And while we say goodbye, I have to say hello and welcome to my brand-new niece, born tonight in Evanston. And congratulations to her parents, all of whom will be residing in the second ward. And the only shame is that my new niece, Vivian, will only know you as her alderman for less than a month. So anyway, congratulations to Tom and Michelle.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I wouldn't have the good fortune as some wards did in snow removal, I can tell you that the mayor and Johanna Niden from Economic Development and I drove from Evanston through Lincolnwood, through Skokie, through Chicago to Oak Park. And I can assure you, comparing the work done in those communities to the work done in our community in snow removal, there's no comparison. We sat in the heart of downtown Oak Park, days and days and days after the blizzard. And snow was piled everywhere on the sidewalk and we were really proud of Evanston. I want to remind Alderman Burris that there's nothing greener than a vacant lot. And that's what we're going to have here. So on the one hand, we won't have economic development, but on the other hand, we'll have a nice green lot. And Alderman Jean Baptiste and I have broken up lately, but maybe within the next two weeks, we'll get back together. But he is, he is my second favorite.
Alderman Burris?
I also want to say thank you to the Public Works on the efforts on snow removal. And similar to Alderman Rainey's experience, a few days after the storm, I actually headed out east to visit my son. And I will tell you that Cambridge, Massachusetts, doesn't even come close to how well Evanston did. We could not get through streets in Cambridge. It was awful. And so I kept thinking, wow, we have awesome Public Works people here in Evanston. I know there were issues that came up with alleys and people being plowed in, but overall, 75% outstanding. So thanks to Suzette and Pat. Congratulations to Alderman Jean Baptiste. You've been one of my favorite people to spar with. And as you know, I love sparring. So I will miss that on council for sure and outside of council as well. Also, the ninth ward, we're having a meeting on February 22nd at 7:00 p.m. at the Piccolo Theater, which is in the main street metro station. So we'll get to hear trains as the meeting goes on. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Alderman Jean Baptiste. I tell you this almost every day, I'm sure. I feel so sorry for ourselves, but I'm so happy for you. And we'll talk about that more in two weeks. I also want to thank city staff for their efforts in snow removal in my ward that's very heavily congested, including the university and downtown. You just, you guys did a great job and I appreciate that. I also appreciate how hard you've worked over the past couple of weeks with all the other things that are going on to help us work through a solution at Kendall, which amazingly is, has been wonderful. The developer has been great to work with, law department, economic development staff, everyone has been fantastic. And I'm sure what's going to end up at Kendall is going to make everyone very, very happy. Finally, I want to remind everyone that our quarterly first ward meeting is coming up on Tuesday, March 1st. That's two weeks from tomorrow at the downtown library, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the large community meeting room. And we'll talk...
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, litigation, and minutes, these agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act, these exceptions are five ILCS 120/2C1, C8, C11, and C21.
City clerk?
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Do they give you robes?
They robe you on the day of service.